Chair, five members come to the quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Moos, out of Legislative Staff, Ms. Angelita Benali, and all the folks on the call. Cecilia, Honorable Edison Winika, would you provide us the invocation?
Hakushina, here, or Chair, and members of the committee, I don't know. Yate, we just need all this. I don't understand. Uh, we see, so there's a safe area, the evening, uh, all the, um, our heads and give thanks to our heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we come before you this beautiful morning. Thankful for passions that help, always about each and every one of us. Thankful for one another, for the support that we have for one another and responsibilities that we have. Thankful for the good night's rest that we had and for action that thou, that thou gives us each and every. Thankful for all the many blessings, Father, and thankful for one another. Thankful for families or children and our loved ones. That's our blessings might be with you and Navajo Nation, President and Vice President of Navajo Nation and the Navajo Nation Council. Leadership at the level of the chapter fifty. All those that are keeping in government. Thankful for all the people, all that they do, for each and every one of them. And bless our leadership on a state and a federal level. Bless all the people throughout the world that they might have at this time with us. So doing all that we can to overcome it, Father, that we might. We're so thankful for the responsibility that we have, uh, trusted the people that has put on us to be in this leadership. Items on the agenda and that we might be able onto some of those concerns and some division have that we might be that we discuss items that we might thankful, Father, for all that we have and our elders that they might that's those that are sick, Father, and those that they might be comforted and hands and that they might possibilities, that'll be with us and all that we do is protect us from harm. Now, we will take care of our meetings that we might humbly pray that son's name, Jesus Christ.
We're all on the call. Did Edison's, uh, might go on mute?
No, sir, he's finished.
Okay. Yeah, Cecilia, uh, thank you for the, um, prayer and acknowledging the beautiful morning and all the needs for our all for a safe and healthy, um, place on this earth. Committee members, does anybody have any announcement? I know that we're all probably tasked with requests for special meetings or special items, chapter planning meetings and whatnot. We do have tomorrow a presentation by the insurance carriers that cover the Navajo Nation for drought insurance. Guess that's a live presentation in Phoenix, but some of us won't make that trip and we'll connect by Zoom. The other is just this morning, I was forwarded a, um, an email that talks about a work session with the Navajo Nation Advisory, Advisory, uh, Council. And in that work session is three items, all, um, having to do with the Veterans Programs, Policies and Funds, and of course, one of them is Oversight. I would suggest you look at that aspect. Guess it's been talked about, strategized for the longest time and now it's, uh, in black and white, meeting members. I, I will probably, uh, call into that meeting to see what, how it proceeds. Um, and then of course, Wednesdays are regular meeting where we'll address legislation. And I think, uh, Thursday is a regularly scheduled, uh, N'vukia Kit Committee, but we haven't gotten notice of that yet. So that would be my, uh, announcement to committee members. Anybody else? We did receive a text from Honorable Ersan So to be excused for two hours before she can, uh, call in on this meeting. Uh, let that be part of the record. Thank you. And now we go to introductions, recognizing guests and visiting officials. But folks on the call, please introduce yourselves.
Good morning. This is Rose Graham with Scholarship Office.
Good morning, everybody. This is Dr. Begay with the DODI Superintendent's Office. Thank you.
Good morning, Yate Benet, Hesse Committee. This is Derek Franklin from OPVP. I transitioned from DODI to OPVP. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning, Shite, honorable committee members. Ms. Perfilia Fowler, Division of Human Resources on the call. Yate Benet.
Good morning, Shenan. This is Tommy Sosi from Office of the Speaker on the line.
Good morning, uh, good morning, honorable, um, members. My name is Thomasito Woodyam. I'm also on the line, Human Resources Director with DPM. Thank you.
Uh, Yate, good morning all. This is Paul Spruun, Assistant Attorney General from the Navajo Department of Justice, and we have several attorneys from DOJ also on the line. Thank you.
This is Jason Searle with Navajo DOJ as well.
This is Aiden Graybill with Navajo DOJ as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Shandine Holian with Department of Personnel Recruitment Team.
Morning, Chair. Committee members, this is Michelle with Department of Health. I'm on the call.
Anyone else? Not then, let's proceed to reviewing and adopting the proposed agenda. Ms. Angelita Benali?
Um, Yate Benet, Mr. Chair, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. You have your proposed agenda for the Health Education and Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Special Meeting, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, residing to Honorable Daniel Eso, Chairperson, Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson, places via telecommunications, Wind Rock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One call meeting to order, roll call, invocation announcements, two, recognized guests and visiting officials, three, review and adopt the agenda, four, review and adopt the journals, none, five, receiving reports, A is from the Scholarship and Financial Assistance Office with DODI regarding the scholarship funding shortfall. Presenters are Ms. Rose Graham, Program Manager, two, and Dr. Harold Begay, Superintendent of Schools with DNA, Department of DNA Education. B, the Administration and Recruitment Sections with the Department of Personnel Management regarding vacancies. Presenters are Thomasito Woody, Human Resource Director with the Administration, and Shandine Holian, HR Analyst with Recruitment, all together with the Department of Personnel Management. C, Navajo Department of Health, the Daltons, regarding the update on supplies and distribution. Presenters are Valerie Jones, Health Services Administrator with the Division of Aging and Long-Term Services, Navajo Department of Health. D, Navajo Department of Justice, regarding the opioid settlement. Presenters are Jason Steril, Attorney, Paul Spruun, Assistant Attorney General with the Navajo Nation Department of Justice Litigation Unit. Six, old business, none, seven, new business, none, eight, close of meeting announcements and adjournment. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, okay. Um, thank you, Ms. Benali. We have a motion by Honorable Edison Winika, second by Honorable Paul Begay. Committee, uh, are there any, uh, additions or deletions on the proposed agenda?
Chair.
Oh, Cecilia, go ahead.
Oh, I was very disappointed, Chair, to find out that there's still a problem with, uh, Richfield School as far as BIE is concerned, um, for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. They haven't paid, uh, what it's supposed to pay, and it's going to complicate things again with the school. By the fifteenth of this month, if they don't get that, uh, paid, there's going to be positions that have to be cut. But oh, Hashinta, and I think, uh, here at school district has really been helpful in letting the students continue, uh, to go to school there. Uh, of course, Doi Ashwana, I don't know what BIE is doing. And, uh, now that, uh, uh, Franklin is over at the President's Office, maybe he can really start pushing that. I don't know, maybe it's about time, oh, by the dawn, to have a congressional intervention. Do we need to do that? See that eyes is all, all but not what that is. It's like they just respond to something that's immediate, but responsibility goes beyond that, and they're not taking care of, uh, uh, the responsibilities that they have. Edition, uh, uh, Chair, uh, maybe we should add that to the agenda so that we can discuss that.
Thank you, Cecilia, Honorable Edison Winika. I guess, uh, my thought was to put it on to Wednesday's agenda and give notice to Ms. Karen Malone, to, um, Ms. Sharon Pinto, and to Alol Yem, that director helped me in coming with
Tony Dearman.
No, no, Tony Dearman. Okay. I do, uh, to bring in also Cody Workman on Wednesday's agenda, and perhaps that'll give our new OPVP staff assistant, um, some time to um, reach out.
That'll be fine, Chair. Appreciate it.
So and at that time, if need be, we could also have phone, um, phone line ready for executive session. Even today's, uh, uh, update on opioid, if the vice of, uh, our attorneys, then we could, we should also have, uh, executive session line available. Those are my thoughts. Committee members, in your request, uh, Honorable Winika, let's defer that, but make sure it's, uh, on the agenda and everybody has noticed that we will be on the agenda. But it will
Okay. That'll be fine. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, Hakushina. Uh, with that, uh, the Moos, roll call, vote on this, uh, agenda.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. Honorable Paul Begay, Jr.
That was your Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay, Jr. goes green. Honorable Pernal Valona?
Valona votes green.
Honorable Pernal Valona goes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater goes green. Honorable Charlene Stowe? Honorable Edison Davidika?
Green.
Honorable Edison Davidika votes green. Chair, would a four in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, committee members. Let the record show four po, uh, four, four in favor, zero opposed. Um, one member excused and the chair not voting. With that, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali. Item four, there being none, we proceed on to item five. Um, five A, review the in the item with the committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, you have number five, receiving reports, A is the Scholarship and Financial Assistance with DODI regarding the scholarship funding shortfall. Presenters are Ms. Rose Graham, Program Manager, two, with the Scholarship and Financial Assistance Office, and Dr. Harold Begay, Superintendent of Schools with the Department of DNA Education. Mr. Chair?
Hakushina, uh, Ms. Rose Graham, uh, though, Doctor Harold Begay, you have the relevant floor.
Good morning, Yate, members of the committee and everyone else on the call. Um, um, try not to take too much of your time. The Navajo Nation Scholarship Office has a three point five million dollar shortfall in, uh, sales tax revenues. And, um, is impacting our budget. Right now, we have in, uh, FY two thousand and twenty-five applications. And, um, in two thousand and twenty-one, um, our applications are at, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. And, um, the sales tax revenues is used for, um, mostly graduate funding. So, um, the, the six thirty-eight contract takes care of higher, um, undergraduate, yeah, although it goes beyond. We use a lot of the Navajo Nation funding, but, um, uh, we have, um, graduate funds that are impacted. We have, um, thus far, um, we've only, uh, have been able to award, um, about two thousand eight hundred students. And, uh, the, we just barely got our federal budget so that the undergraduate numbers will go up, but, um, uh, we have great need for, um, graduate fund, student, uh, funds for graduate students, so, um, um, I am asking if the committee could consider, um, seeking an appropriation and, uh, so, um, some direction or, um, discussion from this meeting, we will, um, get the, um, the necessary documentation in the process. Um, so I'm asking for, uh, support from the committee to sponsor, um, and seeking an appropriation of three point five million dollars. And, um, I can answer any questions you may have.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Graham, before I go to the committee, uh, Dr. Harold Begay, would you, um, like to address the committee also?
Uh, Joe, yes, thank you, our honorable, uh, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. Uh, good morning, Benne Bahaja, and to all the listeners out there, including students who are out there listening to the, uh, the proceedings here. I think we cannot stress enough that our greatest natural resource, our greatest natural resource is our people, and especially our young people who are, some, some of them are having to work as they go through their education to obtain their degrees. Some are being supported by family members and some are going into debt to invest in their future. And so this is an investment. It's really not an expense, expenditure of funds. It is an investment in our people so that they can hone, refine their skills, their tools, I call it, good old reading, writing, arithmetic. And even gone about, or it's been gone of a side, it's on. We have to sharpen our skills and the expenditure is for that purpose. So our people, young and elderly, like, can come back and work with our people to improve what I call our, our demographics. We have critical issues face, facing us. Housing, the road condition, the business, the employment, the healthcare, uh, you could go down the line. And this is, and again, such an important investment in our greatest natural resource, which is our people. And there are thousands of application, again, that are on the back burner. And so we must continue to make a bigger investment, uh, in the, in our, our, our people, young and elderly, like. And so we are asking again, uh, to act favorably on this request on behalf of our people. Again, thank you, um, to honorable members of Health Education Human Services Committee, our honorable Chair, Daniel So, and, uh, Mr. Slater, Honorable Slater, our Vice Chair and members. Uh, you just need all this. Thank you.
With that, committee members, uh, the floor is open for questions and comments. Okay, Ms. Graham and Dr. Begay. Oh, Cecilia, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, go ahead.
Thank you. I think my only question right now is, has an unmet needs, uh, request or, or set of documents been developed and if they have, can it be submitted to Chair and the committee? And if they haven't, can they be developed and then submitted to the committee?
Thank you for your question, Douglas Slater. Yes, we do. It's, um, we're ready to move it forward for three point five million dollars.
Thank you.
Uh, good.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, Chair. This is, uh, Ms. Bob Ross, and I was, uh, just as a time saver, I was wondering if, uh, I could make a statement or ask Ms. Graham some questions.
Thank you for joining the call, Ms. Bob Ross, and you certainly can.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, so, um, Ms. Graham and committee, uh, members, although I haven't heard it stated, I am presuming that, uh, uh, the request that the Scholarship Office is making will be from the, uh, UUFSB. Um, if I'm incorrect, let me know on that. But if it is from, uh, the UUFSB, uh, what we will need is a Appendix K from the Budget Instruction Manual filled out, uh, the various budget documents, I believe it's, uh, Budget Forms one through four. We will need a, uh, Budget Impact Analysis from the Office of Management and Budget, and we will need a letter from the Controller's Office, um, indicating, one, uh, what the balance in the UUFSB is and whether this, uh, appropriation would be considered, uh, recurring or non-recurring. and whether this appropriation would be considered recurring or non-recurring. Uh, that last question really drives how we draft the legislation. Uh, we will also need some type of uh really description, and I'm sure Ms. Graham has this, about how the uh funds will uh what policies and procedures or what policies, at least the uh funds will be distributed under. So, uh, Chair, thank you for the opportunity to just state what what we will need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Ross. That is quite uh necessary items that committee was looking for. Uh, Ms. Graham.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair and Ms. Bob Ross. Yes, I made a list of everything we need and um, thank you. Yeah, we s- we are um looking at the UUFB. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, committee members. That's exactly the reason that um Ms. Graham and I had talked about to put this item on the agenda. And we got the clarity needed to pursue legislation. Committee members, anybody else? Vice Chair Slater, do you have follow up?
No, I just look forward as a committee to receiving all those documents so we can support them.
Well, she uh, uh, what Aida.
Thanks, Helena.
Oh, Honorable Helena Sethnaus, you have the teleconference floor.
Oh, thank you, uh, yeah, okay. Chairman and uh committee members, good afternoon or good morning, uh, committee members and uh all those uh joining us on the call. Uh, thank you for joining us and participating. And uh, uh, just add one quick question, I guess, maybe two, but to Mrs. Graham. How do we keep track of the amount of money that's going out on the scholarship funds? Is there uh, I mean, I'm just trying to figure and uh you get a set of amount of money and then you start up uh awarding those scholarships. Where is the cutoff that when you get a group of money? How do, how do you guys decide when you're gonna shut that down? And and uh three point five million dollars is a lot of overage. Uh, and uh, there's a, is there a way that you can capture that? Were you gonna go into negative sooner than three point five million? Uh, or is it just, uh, how does those awards meet? Uh, and and when, when, who is gonna be responsible for the cutoff that when the, when the funds are are drawn down uh to zero about? Uh, I I just had those questions, uh, uh.
Chair. Thank you, uh, Honorable Helena, if I may. The result is from a shortfall in funding. Not necessarily an over expenditure of awards. But let me give the floor back to Ms. Rose Graham to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, uh, Mr. Helena. The um Navajo Nation Scholarship Office receives uh revenues from uh sales tax. And um in FY twenty twenty two, we received three million dollars. And um the, so, which is, which is uh not enough. And that's where our our short shortfall is um to fund the rest of our graduate students. Um, we need an additional three point five million dollars. And um we can um go through a process of um um how we um make decisions. Um, it's all done through the database. And um um, maybe uh another time um, we can go through uh a demonstration and then uh provide you um detail on how those decisions are made. But um it it's basically a shortfall. It's not, we can't go in the red. There, there's no, there's no allowance for going in the red, so. Thank you.
Honorable Helena, do you have follow up?
Uh, yes, Chair, uh, to 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 get this correct, I want, just wanted to make sure that we, all these people that apply and uh these are funds that were distributed uh 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 last year, the year before? Is that, is that what I'm hearing, uh, Ms. Graham?
Um. Thank you, Mr. Helena. This is FY twenty twenty two, the fiscal year, Navajo Nation fiscal year that just started in uh October.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Graham. I know, so this is for a first quarter, a first half of school year only? Does it include the second half?
This is going to include this, this um academic year and then the fall because our, our budget has to last throughout the academic year.
Okay, so now with all the application that you have, it is totaling out that you're gonna shortfall over three point five million for the, for the fall season?
Uh, yes.
Or spring?
Or for spring and fall. Spring twenty one, fall twenty two. We are now, uh, sorry, spring twenty two and um and then uh fall in the fall that starts in um September.
Okay, so uh, Ms. Graham, so the money that you're getting from the uh sales tax is not enough to uh cover that cost. Uh, what was the amount, the last that you receive from the sales tax?
Um, we currently have um the original twin FY twenty two, we received three million dollars. So um six point five million dollars.
Okay, and so do you have any projections then, Mr. Graham, for the twenty two, twenty three school year? And what's gonna be needed for that as well?
Projection in funding?
Yes, for uh for the scholarship. Yes, ma'am, for the scholarship funding for twenty two, twenty three. Do you have a budget set up for that yet?
Um, no. Overall, overall, um, we spend about twelve million four hundred in in FY twenty two. Last year, we spent uh twelve million four hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars in student financial aid. And uh this year, we are at nine point seven million dollars. We're still awarding for the spring. And and then we have the fall to complete. So we average about, about um about twenty uh twenty, sometimes it goes up to twenty five million and sometimes and um a little bit below. But that's normally our, our budget, which is entirely scholarship.
Good, thank you, Ms. Graham. So I have for now, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, any other questions? Not, could I have a motion to accept the um report?
Motion, Wanika.
Second, that was a case. Motion by Honorable Edison Wanika, second by Honorable Paul Begay. With the acknowledgement that all the appropriate budget uh requirements for UUFB appropriations will be prepared. But Aida, committee members, any additional comments, questions? Oh, Honorable Helena, I don't think anybody's uh prepared a budget into twenty twenty three unless it's the feds. So, and and that budget request wouldn't be started to formulate until um later this year. Thank you. Mr. Moos, vote called vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior. Green. Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Bernard Helena. Green. Honorable Bernard Helena votes green. Honorable Paula Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Paula Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Uh, but Edison J. Wanika votes green. Chair, are you voted for in favor or opposed?
Thank you, committee members. Uh, four in favor, one to excuse the Chair not voting. We proceed on to item five B. Um, Ms. Benali.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Um, number five B is the Administration and Recruitment Sections of the Department of Personnel Management, and it's regarding job vacancy. The presenters are Thomasita Woody, Human Resource Director, and Shandine Holian, HR Analyst for Recruitment. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Benali.
Uh, yes.
This is Thomasita Woody and this Shandine Holian, you have the teleconference floor. I was on mute. You may go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um, honorable members of Health Education and Human Services. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, so can you uh provide me some insight in terms of um what it is that the committee wishes to hear? Um, I can give you reports for first quarter and January. Um, but if you provide me some insight, I do, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Just be assertive and provide what you have.
Okay. All right, thank you again. And um for the Department of Personnel Management, we've been uh since my arrival here back in October, a lot of what um, what I've been able to assess to this point is how can we in human, in Department of Personnel Management, be able to better serve our internal and external customers? A lot of what we do, um, and mind you, we have uh as far as recruiters, we have two individuals who are doing recruitment. We have one individual who's assisting. And when you look at um the overall picture of Department of Personnel Management or even the nation as a whole, we have two recruiters who are actually doing the job. Um, and the ratio is usually one to one hundred, one staff to one hundred individuals in order to have um better customer service. But we, you know, we basically do the best that we can. And I've seen that in terms of the amount of output that is being generated on a monthly basis from our recruiters. Now, um, next week, on Monday, we do have um a recruitment manager who will be joining us from um, he's coming from Office of the Controller, OOC. So we're very happy about that. Um, so we, we're, in terms of the quarter, first quarter on recruitment statistics, and I doubt, I can provide you more in depth in terms of numbers, um, and I'll send that to you before the end of the day so it can provide you some insight. Um, for the first quarter, the amount of applications that we've received within DPM from October to December was a thousand. And um of those thousand qualifications that we've assessed, or we call it qualification assessments, we've had completed about five hundred. Um, the job vacancy announcements, that we have two hundred and seventy four. And then individual assessments, say for instance, a particular department wants to assess certain individuals who meet the qualification assessments or qualification standards, um, we're able to complete one hundred and eleven. Um, right now, there is a lot of vacancies posted on the website. Uh, we have like two hundred and twenty. Um, a lot of those in individual vacancies are hard to fill positions. Um, so we mainly have those open until filled. So we have a hundred and fifty six of those. Um, one of the um one of our better, I guess you could say, um uh review in, not only in recruitment. Um, each one of these sections within DPM all play uh a role with each other. So we have classification and pay, we have support services, position and position control. We have recruitment, employee relations, records, so on and so forth. So what we did last uh couple of weeks ago is that we have webinars. And these webinars were basically trainings that we've conducted to the overall population of the Navajo Nation employees, specifically um capturing those of that are supervisors. Now, in those, we've had over two hundred, you know, participants in these um webinars. So we felt compelled that, you know, we could capture more people. So what we've done is basically recorded this and hopefully we'll place that on our website. Um, going back to uh individuals in January, in our reports to DHR, we've um hired about sixty nine individuals. And then we have individuals between termination, resignation, and retirement. We have eighty seven. So we have more leaving the So we have more leaving the organization and, you know, we're also, um, bringing in new individuals. One of the things that, that I've been tasked with in the past, uh, since my, um, arrival here, was to look at, um, a system that could really help us, um, not just, you know, we call it a human resources management system. Like with finance, they have their own, um, financial system. A lot of how we conduct business between, oh, oh, Office of Controller and D P M is payroll. So a lot of those are a part of how we function, um, with both departments. So in this, um, we completed a R F P to, uh, that's, that was published actually on February first. And this, um, R F P stems from a hu- an overall human resources management system. The system will consist of various, um, how, how we will, you know, um, work online or through the, a particular system that would allow us to communicate with each other through, um, the internet. Um, one of the things that, you know, just to bring you, bring you some ideas of what we're, um, developing in this or we were, are requiring, is more or less like an enterprise structure. Basically, um, what are the requirements within human resources? And as I have explained earlier, um, the classification, the, the pay, the, uh, support services, recruitment, so on and so forth. We all work with each other to, um, it could be one individual who's coming on board so that one individual goes through, through this whole process in order to become, uh, an employee with the organization. So this human resources management system, we're hoping, um, once it goes live, that we have all the pieces together so that, you know, we could communicate that way. Um, the problem that we've had, especially in recruitment, is the vacancies and the hiring. You know, we want to streamline a lot of these processes in order for us to, to be a little bit more receptive to our client base, who are the external, um, applicants who would apply online or those supervisors or managers who are managing a particular vacancy within a, um, within their department. So those are the intricate details, you know, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, accomplish here in D P M. Um, the other part to this would eventually be, uh, completing a compensation study and, uh, looking at, uh, completing at, uh, an R F P for that as well. So just giving you some insight in terms of a report. Um, if there's any questions, I will be able to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Woody. Committee members? Uh, for the committee, um, information. Uh, basically, at the local level, I'm dealing with, uh, a state-funded position for librarian. It's taken so long. Then, of course, a senior center manager that's taking so long. And then finally, we, we, uh, um, and then, of course, a C S C that's been vacant since July. And finally, we get a C H R. So in, in that, that's the reason that, uh, I'm prompted to put this item on the agenda. And, um, and in other times, uh, I think Honorable Charlene So has, uh, um, basically put that on as part of our discussions. I think she was saying she had a E H R and a senior citizen manager. I don't know if they've been filled, but that's the reason that, uh, basically put it, putting this on the agenda, uh, committee members. Do you have questions, comments?
Chair, have you got any comments, questions?
Go ahead, Honorable Haluna.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, uh, you know, I, I guess, uh, uh, Ms. Thomasita, uh, Woody, I think, uh, 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 what kind of program, uh, I guess, I guess we're going to go to the job that, uh, that you guys are having, the, uh, being, uh, produced out there, uh, across the reservation year there. I know you guys had one, uh, a few weeks back. How many job fairs do you guys have planned? And, um, you know, it's a problem, uh, because it was eighty-seven, I was thinking it was somewhere in the eighties, and, and to only hire, uh, uh, sixty back and, uh, if that's a natural occurrence in, in due time, we're going to run out of people. But anyway, uh, actually, the, the question I had was, uh, on, on all the, uh, job fairs that you've been having out there and, uh, one of the biggest things I've been fighting over here is that my area is, uh, having a, uh, coordinator and a, uh, A M S as well. And, uh, thankfully, I got to, all, all of them are taken care of except for one now. So I'm still waiting on it and I keep, uh, asking about that. But I, I also know that, you know, the, the answer is there's just no applicants for it. And, uh, I don't know that, uh, the qualifications are too stiff or, or, uh, uh, um, where it needs to be done to try to get those positions filled, because I know there's a lot of them across the Navajo Nation under that same position. That's the first thing I want to find out on that is, is, uh, you know, I have one chapter that I had, didn't have a A M S and C S C, uh, C S C for, oh, maybe two years. And then, uh, then they had one and the other, and then they did not stay. So I'm wondering if there's something wrong with the process as, as far as the hiring procedures or what they're expected, the job is expected, or how it needs to be explained to them that, what they have responsibility in that, uh, to run that chapter. And, uh, as a matter of fact, it's the community, if there's C S C, is, uh, they're running the community and, uh, uh, I don't know, uh, uh, but we're, we're always looking for local people. Maybe, maybe you need to find somebody that, who is just ready, that wants to be in that position to take care of it. Uh, so the other part that I was getting back to was, uh, the recruitment. Uh, we need to find a way different to, 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 uh, uh, do recruiting on reservation, uh. I'm, I never thought I'd say this, but I, I know uh, a lot of, uh, people that have been getting turned down because they, they're unqualified for the position that they're trying to apply for. And, and I think it, the advisor was just telling me that they were just looking for work to get job, get, get some money coming in. But I think that, that has to be reevaluated as far as who's going to be qualified, who are qualified, and who's going to be doing the judgment on that. Uh, there's, it, it's just being, uh, there's certainly too many people are coming around and saying the same question, asking that same question, why this is. There's a couple of things I have out there, Chair, all stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I guess, and on top of that, my Horse Lake chapter does not have a C S C or an A M S. And boy, the, those positions are sorely needed, especially when we're talking about A R P projects, so. Um, that, and that's other compounding uh, aspect. And, um, Ms. Woody, what is the role of a recruiter?
What is? Um, can I answer Honorable Haluna's, um, question?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, take them in order of the, how they were placed.
Okay. Um, in terms of, of the terminations, let me give you a little bit more general information as the month of January. We've had twenty, twenty-four individuals who've resigned. Um, we had eighteen who had end of employment, who were youth employ, who were youth that were employed with the, um, the nation. We have five who were either discharged or terminated. And then we had, um, thirty who had end of, um, temporary employment, and we had eight retirements. And then end of political appointment, we had two. So in total, we had eighty-seven. That's
Uh, good morning, Ms. Huber.
Giving you an idea of a little bit of breakdown, a little bit more than just the eighty-seven. Um, in terms of the job fair, because of COVID, um, we've had several instances within D P M that, um,
Uh, I did, uh, that's it.
I'm sorry? Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I muted the, um, interruption. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we've had, we've had, um, individuals within my department or D P M who were either positive or exposed to COVID, which really put, you know, the, um, the responsibilities of, okay, there's not a chance that D P M can be, um, closed. You know, we have to maintain and, and business as you usual on a daily basis. Um, so keeping that in mind, we can't really have job fairs, but we can do, um, virtual job fairs. Uh, we, we do plan to do that. I believe the job fairs were, were done before I arrived, and maybe Ms., um, Holian can provide some more insight in terms of, um, how that, you know, was beneficial for the organization. Um, in terms of recruitment, um, and then, and I'm, I'm going to be honest with you two, you know, um, I applied for a job here, uh, the first time, and I was deemed not qualified because I did not have, um, my master's, but I did, you know, I had my master's degree. And so I know what you are all saying in terms of, um, being deemed not qualified when you have the credentials. Um, so those are the, 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 uh, areas that we're looking at in terms of what are the qualifications? Is it too stringent? Is, um, we don't even have, uh, position descriptions or job descriptions as, as organizations call them. Every position has to go through a P C Q, which is a position qualification, um, criteria's, and they're assessed. And they go through this whole process before it is actually goes to be, um, developed into, um, um, job vacancy announcement. And this is long, drawn-out process. What we're, what I'm looking at is streamlining all of those. So we have to be able to prepare ourselves for that. Um, my staff are in a situation where, you know, this is the, the daily processes when hiring an individual. Not only that, does it, um, fall into play, it's then, once the person is, um, provided the opportunity to, uh, work for the nation, they have to go through, uh, background investigation. We don't know the type of invest, um, background they have or history that they come with. So this particular background investigation is conducted, and it can take, um, several weeks before we get, uh, feedback. If a person's background is actually, um, okay, and we can hire that person, that's when we can make an initial hire. So those processes, um, again, you know, provide, uh, every department or every division within the nation, um, giving them maybe a little bit, and, and this, it's not a streamlined process. I can guarantee you that. And so I look at not only the fact, when I came on board, I was pretty appreciative. I was very appreciative of the fact that, um, um, Dr. Fowler and her team stepped in and said, this is what we're going to do and, and streamline that process. And I want everybody to feel that same way. I want them to, I want these in, individuals to have that type of onboarding. I want them to feel that they're part of this organization and feel good about it and work for us. So a lot of those, those areas, when I had mentioned from the very beginning, you know, there's, there's ensuring that there's monies available, there's ensuring that each individual does have, um, the credentials, and then even coming on board. So recruitment basically is trying to get the best qualified applicant. And they compete for these positions. The positions that you've mentioned within the, the different chapter houses or locations, please bring them to my attention, so then I can look into it. You know, it's not, it's not necessary to be, um, being more strict or having a lot of, um, areas where it's, uh, ke- keeping these people from working for the nation. Um, before you know it, that money is probably no longer available. So we need to keep that, um, keep that going. And I'm willing to work with each of you to, if you have situations within the chapters that you represent, definitely let me know and, or let Dr. Fowler know. She's really good about asking me to work with you. So it makes it easier and I could give you a better answer. Um, um, but that's basically what I wanted to mention.
Thank you, Ms. Woody. Uh, committee members, follow-up questions?
Sure.
Uh, Satilla, Honorable Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for the presentation. I, I didn't quite really know what the impetus was behind placing this on the agenda and where it was coming from, but I'm, I'm appreciative for the opportunity to address you and ask some questions. And I guess first among them, I'd like to make a comment, and that is that in several of my chapters, we don't have full chapter staffing, and it's severely impacting the direct services to our local constituents. In Rough Rock, there's neither a C S C or an A M S, and I know there's been difficulty bringing on an office aide to assist the community in the, in the near term. So if there's any way that your office can help expedite the onboarding of someone, either on a temporary or permanent basis, the community is in dire need for water hauling and other services that unfortunately can't be provided by the chapter leadership in order to keep the segregation of duties. So that's one. Second, in Round Rock, we do not have an A M S. And we have someone there who I think is on a temporary office aide basis, is assisting and seems competent, but wouldn't qualify for what I'd say is a pretty, I think rigorous, A M S job description compared to the duties that are assigned to A M S. And doesn't mean that they aren't important or difficult duties, but there's a certain barrier that's preventing people who have the caliber and capability to perform the work from actually getting into the positions and doing it in a way that provides certainty to our communities. In Little Chukai, we do not have a C S C, nor do we have an A M S. Luckily, we have a chapter president who is previously a C S C. Luckily, we have a chapter president who was previously a CSC and has been able to assist the community with the assistance of the Chinley ASC. But then over in Saline Wheatfields, we do not have a CSC, although I think there is some movement on getting that position finally filled, but it may leave another vacancy. So in all, there's a big impact that DPM and DCD and recruiting is having on District 11. And I think that the chapters and ASC have done a good job at trying to recruit and advertise for these positions. And there are people in the communities who want to get to work on behalf of their communities. But we, as a nation, are not providing a path forward for that to become a reality. I know that recruitment and HR and personnel is difficult no matter what. And then you throw it onto the res, and it becomes even ten times harder. I've dealt with that personally, and I've shared that many times on this committee. But we've made some asks in the past. And one of the big aspects of recruiting is housing for permanent employment. And we included, I think it was a condition on appropriation to the Division of Human Resources, and it was led and vetoed by the president in this last year's budget. The purpose was to evaluate housing needs across the current employees and then use that data to inform how the nation could make investments in housing that would be targeted to people coming home or filling these positions that had been vacant for a long period of time. And I thought that we had heard from Dr. Fowler this fall that she was going to reinvigorate that initiative, even though it had been line item vetoed. And I sincerely ask that you reinvigorate that initiative. And if there is a need for additional funding to perform something like this, that you make that unmet needs request to the committee so that we can move forward on it. I think we'd be pretty supportive of trying to get data to make smarter housing investment decisions that will benefit, you know, full employment on Navajo. Second, there is a need to have some sort of pilot or temporary basis for assessing individuals that say are at an office aide. They have their high school degree, and in one way or another, they've probably been working for the Navajo Nation, you know, ten, five, ten, fifteen years, and they've been doing the same work as potentially, you know, an accountant or an AMS or a CSC, you know, people that are being compensated and retained at a higher level. And they possess the skill sets. But inherently, we are not permitting them access to these positions. And I think that that is, well, twofold. One, in the position descriptions, if it doesn't say equivalent combination of education and experience, then we automatically dismiss them. And I know that that comes back to some discretion of the program. But I think it should be a standard policy within DPM when you're advising the programs that they need to include that language, or at the chapter level, maybe you do include that language. I think that'll go a long way to eliminating the back and forth, just having a smarter, simpler system right off the top that will attract a wider applicant field that will hopefully be eligible. And then Dr. Fowler, I believe, last year had followed up on our advice for sort of a management or training institute that'd be internal to the Navajo Nation. And a part of that was to reduce people going to... I don't know how to be polite about this. I've just seen so many absolutely asinine HR trainings or management trainings that people have been sent to in Las Vegas and Albuquerque and Phoenix in my time that I totally lost faith in what those really mean. But to complete that sort of work internal to Navajo and indigenous to the nation instead of sending people off. So I think that needs to be followed up on, the management and the modules and those sorts of things, creating a certification program that will allow people, say, if they do have limited education, to receive certifications within the Navajo Nation system that'll allow them to advance. And I think that that's really important for people who have made a commitment to be home, and they didn't have the opportunity or, you know, the financial resources to seek higher education. So they're not going to automatically qualify when they're twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, but they're here and committed. So that's the third thing. And then lastly, I think, just following up on like that pilot program sort of concept. How can we test out empowering the local, rather local, but the programs themselves to have more power in this process? And I don't want to beat up on DPM, but, you know, the perception is DPM's a bottleneck. It takes forever to get information in or out, just like with OMB or OOC. And once it is, it's just, okay, here's what the problem, you have to go fix it. And I know you have a lot of limited staff and resources. You're trying to cover the whole nation. I accept all of that. I'm not trying to beat up on you. But we we need to, I think, distribute some of this so that there's more responsibility at the program level for their hiring and, you know, personnel actions. And they don't refer off or defer that sort of responsibility to other entities. I think when people are empowered or programs are empowered, they're stronger overall. So those are a few comments and questions and really just statements about my communities that are really being hurt by a lack of expedience in hiring for these critical positions. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Slater. Ms. Woody.
Would it be okay to request Dr. Fowler to answer some of those questions that Honorable Slater had mentioned? That she can give some insight as well?
I guess the most, there's some... Answer the questions as they were placed.
Yes.
Once we get to Honorable Slater's questions and overview, then I'll ask that Dr. Fowler address them.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. As far as the positions that are vacant and with Rough Rock, Round Rock, Lurukchukai, Saline Wheatfields, definitely I will look into that and provide some insight. So that provides you, you know, in terms of what has been the status. I don't have that information right up, right off, right now, but I will be able to provide that for you once I've researched it a little bit. In terms of hard to recruit or the housing issue, Dr. Fowler can answer that or provide some insight as well. The Management Institute and management training, one of the things that I'm looking at, you know, in every organization, they have what is called, not just recruitment, they have recruitment and retention. And so with retention, you, once you get individuals on board, you want to retain them. You want to ensure that these these individuals have the opportunity to advance, you know, within the the organization they work for. So with the new recruitment manager, you know, coming on board, we'll be able to sit down and say, okay, what types of retention programs can we offer, whether they're internships or being able to mentor a mentorship program, or even advancements with Management Institute and Training Program? Those are, you know, always going to be very costly for any organization. But it also is an investment. You know, we want to make sure that these individuals who we say for a mentorship program, we want to, we know that an individual is going to retire. They're going to retire and take their skills with them. So what we want to do is ensure that if an individual is planning retirement, who's going to replace that person? So the problem always comes when you have a big group of individuals who retire. They take their skills with them. And there's no plan in between that to try to train somebody else, you know, what they know or to provide that mentorship for them. So we want to have a better overview of a Management Institute or a Management Training Program. We do have the monies that are slated for this. In terms of the the programs for, you know, the DPM being a bottleneck, I will have to agree with you. You know, it's, it has, it feels like even as a director here, it feels as if everything that we're trying to accomplish has to be controlled. You know, there's policies, we can change those. But we would have to really have a better system in terms of being able to to be a little bit flexible. We want to make sure we stay within the confines of the particular laws, laws of the land, so to speak, in terms of employment. So having those people at the table and saying, okay, how can we better make use of what we have here in DPM? One of the things that's always important is that in any organization, when you have a human resources department, you're a resource to the people, whether they're internal, external clients. So, you know, having this creation and looking at a human resources management system could really open that and streamline those systems. And and those are things that we need to plan as best as we can before we go live so that everybody is trained in this. And I could give you a little bit more insight, you know, when the time is right in terms of the human resources management system and what that will entail. But as far as, I'd like to also request Dr. Fowler to give us her insight in terms of the areas that were mentioned regarding the Management Institute and Housing.
Mr. Chair Shitei, I am available. I am on the call.
Dr. Fowler, you have the floor.
I can't hear you. Honorable head committee. As far as Shitei later regarding the housing infrastructure, that's one thing that I'm not stopping. I got to, I'm reestablishing it. I put an unmet need budget together for each of the agency areas. And if we're telling, asking, requesting us to bring our people back, we really need the housing infrastructure. I understand, yes, it was vetoed in an area, but, you know, that does not stop. We got to continue with our Plan B, which is really moving forward with some unmet needs for our housing area and really working closely with the Division of General Services. I'm happy and thankful of my staff there at Department Personnel Management with the leadership of Ms. Woody. Housing is a huge need. We are also looking into the pilot program, starting with some internships in each of these divisions. One thing that we're not doing is that we're still sticking with the old mechanism of the evaluation system. And once you provide fours and fives, you know, everybody decides to go ahead. Yeah, and we know, they know that they're going to get some type of an increase. But we are reevaluating that to include CEU hours, any professional development hours, how they're keeping themselves abreast of their positions, and then also within their, within their programs. Cross-training is really important. I tell my people, you know, I can't send you out to these trainings. So when you do come back, you'd have gone to some of these trainings. What type of cross-training mechanism do we have in place? And we're going to start off with our supervisors and managers. And I'm not sure if you've ever seen the customer service training that I provided. But we are looking at posting more of these online virtual trainings that our employees can review. And then in the meantime, get some hours, professional development hours. So that's what we want to do, and that's what we're working on. There's a lot to be done. And.
Committee members, any follow up? Any additional comment?
Should I, Chair?
Vice Chair Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. Shama, thank you very much for reaffirming your commitment to what we discussed. And I I just want to, you know, give you some urgency as a leader on your oversight. And for all of us, you know, who knows where we're going to be come January of next year. And we're given an opportunity to make the biggest impact that we can when we have these amazing positions of authority and policymaking. And I just really don't want my time on this committee to lapse without us putting all of our effort into looking into these because they really tie into every single aspect of the development of this nation. And, you know, people look, I think, we can all accept that people look down on HR and think it's unimportant. But it's in fact like the most important part of our government functioning. And I extend my appreciation to you and your staff for the effort you put in every day and the added responsibilities of ARPA and all of that. But, you know, we as leadership need to look at ourselves. We have an opportunity to spend a hundred million dollars on housing and legislation two, five, seven, twenty-one. And we could alter that. We could change the way it's going out if we're dissatisfied with it. But I think fundamentally, that's going to be a positive for the nation. And it can be a combination of needs base for the resources that people have, plus thinking about the future and bringing people back so that they can, you know, have an apartment or hog on while they maybe establish themselves more permanently on a homesite lease on their traditional lands. So those will conclude my comments, and thank you very much, Shama and Shana.
Go ahead. Committee members? I guess, Ms. Woody, with your education in human resources, I guess the one thing that we face, why does it take so long?
Sir, we can't hear you.
Why does it take so long to get a person employed? Can you hear that, Halona?
Oh, now we can. Yeah, we were chopping up there.
Oh, now we can, yeah, we were chopping up there.
I turned around, standing in a different direction now.
Oh, good job.
And, uh, I guess that's the part. You can, when you can, take a look at the process. I know at, um, within the legislative branch and attorney applicant, it took seven months to get him on board. So, it's, uh, that's the type of processes that we face, both at the central level and at the local level. You, you heard from three delegates saying, we have these vacancies. How do we amend the process? Should the recruitment and perhaps qualifications process rest with the division? This aspect of people being overqualified, that, that there has to be a there has to be a change. And those places where there are a very necessary, um, CHR, health-related, mental health specialists, social workers, those are the ones we're dealing with. And there be the aspect of sign-on bonuses, so they can take the job. And then how do we then, um, I guess, from what I'm hearing on some of these positions, there's the tribal process for background checks. And then there's the federal process for background checks. Then I hear that you apply at the post office for a background check and you can get it in thirty days. So, what, what, with that, obviously, the, the policies that you are working with, that we have oversight on, we need to come forward with a solution. And we're looking to Division of Personnel Management to come forward with it. Otherwise, uh, committee is sitting on a horse, isn't moving. Even though we, um, Halona keeps the court ready, but it doesn't move. And that, and that's where we're talking about. And Dr. Fowler, all these assertions you give to the committee, how many times will, have we heard these words? And it's a time when we need to get rolling. I understand, um, um, this aspect. And, and so we've been, I guess, giving you the latitude to say, uh, go make the changes, but we need further changes. Let the number of vacancies that are on the website hasn't gone down. We asked you to do a, um, questionnaire on the at-will. That at-will, how many have we lost through that? It certainly should have been a tool, but it doesn't seem to be working. Then it's, uh, for an organization, uh, like the Navajo Nation Government, it has to respond to the criticisms. And the cris- criticisms should lead to advancement at this point in time, as Honorable Slater, uh, stated. We'll see where everybody is as soon as November. So, we, um, the division can move forward between now and then or they can just brush us, brush the oversight side. And we hope that you don't brush the oversight aside. We hope we are here to make improvements, both from the administration and from the committee. With that, committee members, there's open for a motion.
A motion, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you, hello.
Any comments additional to what the committee has put forth? Mr. Mullows, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honor Paul Bagage Junior. Honor Paul Bagage Junior. Honor for now, Halona.
Oh, it's a
Honor for now, Halona was green. Honor Carla Russell Slater.
Green.
Carla Russell Slater goes green. Honor Charlene So. Honorable Edson J. Winika.
Green.
Edson J. Winika goes green. Honor Paul Bagage Junior. Honor Paul Bagage Junior. Chair, vote a three, favor zero, opposed?
Thank you, uh, committee members, let's record, show a vote of three in favor. Committee member losing connection, one excuse and the chair not voting. Thank you. Ms. Benali, item five C. Review with the committee, the topic.
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, five C is with the, um, Navajo Department of Health, Daltex, the Division of Aging and Long-Term Services. Uh, the report is gonna be an update on supplies distribution. Presenters are Valerie Jones, Health Service Administrator with, um, Daltex and from the Navajo Department of Health. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Valerie Jones and
Good morning. This is
Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Honorable So, and good morning. Valerie Jones, as I mentioned, the Health Services Administrator for the Division of Aging and Long-Term Care Support. Um, I suppose I need more context to the request. Um, as far as distribution goes, um, the senior centers do receive, um, money for food. They do receive money for, uh, food supplies, operational supplies. Um, we just recently invited them, um, with some personal protective equipment that entailed some sandwich bags, gloves, mask, uh, hand sanitizers, bleach. Yeah, I, I, uh, work, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And again, it, it evolves from pictures, Facebook's messages coming and regarding, uh, portion size at the chapter or at the senior centers, um, statement from staff saying they're short on supplies. And again, uh, this is, uh, recent on the agenda is, uh, Honorable Kealan G. Junior sent an email to all, all folks, O- Office of the President, the Vice President, the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council, the Dr. Jill Jim. And it's regarding that email that there's a real serious concern for services at the local senior centers. And then, uh, most specifically, the Crown Point Agency doesn't have a senior, uh, what do you call it, supervisor that, that oversees all the staff at the senior centers in Eastern and currently, or, um, is there communication to the local managers to say, this is going on? And for, for myself, in response to that email, the only thing I responded was that the committee and the program were looking at that tri-state agreement to, uh, renegotiate the, uh, the reimbursement cost for meals and transportation. And so that's, that's where we're at. Ms. Jones, Dr. Jill Jim.
Well, thank you, Chair So, I appreciate the clarification on that. Yes, I did see that email and I did respond. Say that I am taking it seriously. It's clearly, um, I have a lot more work to do. I have implemented performance improvement plans for each supervisor, uh, too, at each agency. Meaning that sometimes there is a bottleneck that happens within each agency office. And this is my experience in overseeing this, um, started. And I'm not trying to place blame on them, but I'm no, I know that they're doing the best that they can as well. We do have the money there. It's just a matter of, um, understanding the fiscal timeframes that, um, are, are implemented by our state funding authority. So, we do get money from New Mexico, we do get money from Arizona. So, they're our external funding authority, as well as the United States Administration for Community Living. And we also have general funds. So, that totals up to about sixteen million dollars. Now, most of that goes to personnel salaries, of about eleven million dollars, which leaves us about six million in terms of, um, operational supplies and food. Um, what I'm finding here, though, is that there's a limited understanding of the re- reimbursement method. The financial management at each agency level needs to improve. We have an overburdening of accounts that need to be managed. Even our financial system is, um, a little confusing at times to get through. And then we have manual processes that add to the issues between the offices. So, for instance, if Tubus City orders something and they have a PR that comes through, something might not be correct, maybe they don't have enough quotes attached. It then does go back to the agency office and it takes them about a, you know, some days to come out, about a week to come out here and then to drive back to their offices to redo the documents and then bring them back over here. I mean, they, they do have email available. However, sometimes the, there's information from OOC that says that we need, you know, they need the original documents. So, there is that lag in, um, times and, and make sure that this, um, that, that our orders are going through. And as I said, it's the contracts also that, uh, with the different timeframes, it's, is, um, difficult for some of my agents, program supervisors to manage. But as I said, I have put him on a performance improvement plan or I'm going to implement that along with, um, the support of Dr. Jim. And that will, that will go into detail as to when these invoices are due, when a budget revision is necessary, when an ICR is due, when a re- request for direct payment is due. I mean, my team has to be aware of how and when these documents have to get processed. Um, and it's not an easy process. It does take some time as the, there are levels to getting these, um, documents approved. And we are not dealing with the system that is not in real time, that is in real time. We are not. Um, it does take time for our expenditures to show up in the system and it's usually about a month, um, to eight weeks behind, yeah, a month to two months behind. So, it does, as I said, take time to, um, get these orders processed. But as far as I know, our program supervisors, and I have met with them after that email came out and they have been telling me that they have been meeting with their teams and have sent an email out. I did have one individual who was out of the office and, um, uh, you know, I reminded him and gave him the information and was making sure that he was working that, those specific senior centers in his area to make sure that they, um, had the supplies that they need. Thank you.
Committee members, if anybody wanna ask a question, make a comment.
Chairman. Hey.
Daniel So.
Hey.
So that I'm on the call, listening, he's just on it, so, thank you.
Oh, Rashila, um, it's the West So on the line where the East So is chairing the meeting. Um, committee members, any question, comment? Ms. Jones, who have you delegated to be the, um, supervisor of the Eastern Agency Senior Center Managers?
Oh, uh, sorry, uh, thank you, Chair So. Um, that would be myself, um, and Mr. Enzam Lewis, who is our Program Project Special Chair within, um, Wanda
Thank you. Committee members?
Elegant Paul Bagage.
Oh, Shitei, uh, Honorable Paul Bagage, have the teleconference floor.
Thank you, uh, Shitei, uh, Chair, Honorable, Honorable Chair Daniel So. For the members of, uh, Hess Committee, for the President, Il Do, He Ha, uh, Nikil Dhaol, Neto, Daltech, Uh, Eh Bahan Ne. Ot Ashi, Il Tsog Oh, Nahhot, Ish Ashen. Ah Eh De Bah, Dahhoti, Ta, Na, Hal, Na, Na, Gay, Western Agency, Nde. Ah, Kot, Eh, Issues That, uh, Crown Point Has. Il Do, Ah, Kot, En, Legion, Oh, Yo. So, Hajo Da, So, Ich, Han, Ne, Da, Ki, Eh, From The Centers, Uh, To The Agency Offices. Ah, Ko, The, Uh, Shiti, Ta, Na, Znla, Like, Den, Shi, Ish, La, Oh. One of the centers is located in Chabi To. Eh, Eh, Kha, Da, Ish, Ha, Da, Ah, Kot, Eh, La. Uh, I, I'll give you an example, Na, Gay, Uh, Na, Gay, Uh, Senior, Seniors, Dan, Len, Get, Ado, Le, Da, Be, Chet, Eh, Da, The, Ah, Or, Ado, Le, End, De, Di, Oh, Hina, Kot Da. Uh, for instance, a stove, Esbi, Ko, Da, Eh, End, De, Di, Oh, Hina, Da. Uh, Na, Eh, Nah, Nih, It Requires Three, Three Quotes. Ado, Ado, Le, Ash, Ta, Na, Nih, Da, It Requires Three Quotes For Materials. Uh, 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 from the agency office. You need to go out there and get three quotes. Uh, 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 let's say that there's ten elders and they all were purchasing the same thing. Uh, uh, the center, uh, 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 she put all the, uh, the three quotes, uh, put it all, uh, under all the members of the elders in that center.
The portion size. In in a public. Um, education effort. Um. That are mandated through the um meals program. Perhaps developing a poster or um that shows the federal requirements for portion size. Um, early on in this uh the administration. Um, and. The our our um our term. We had met with officials within the Department of Health and Human Services. And one of the efforts was to um allow the usage of fresh fruit. Um, and also allow um the use of push team. As um one of the items that that could be substituted. And those officials uh were even served those portions. In the Dilcon Senior Center. So um from our work, I think we just have to keep pushing. And again, um, on your part, I guess reiterate the what what the requirements are for portion size and to publicize it. Perhaps post it or have the staff at the senior centers post it. At the. Senior Center as well at at the chapter house and and again, there are lots of community bulletin boards that exist. Where uh these uh issues are brought to the forefront to uh in front of the chapter officials. So that's another uh way that. The programs that start communicating with the um. Constituents. And and yes, again, I I guess the the main thing is we have to be cognizant that. Um, the manage management style of some of the agency personnel that really needs so. Some changes. I'll just put it as that. Thank you. Committee members, any other questions, comment?
Should I, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Phil.
Thank you. Um, I I just want to say that I support the management plans or corrective plans with the agency management. And I really think that a lot of the issues that end up gurgling up to the surface come out of central agency. And one of those issues was on the retirement or early retirement of staff and we conducted. A report and meeting on that subject previously. And I ask that you provide a written report back to the committee to update us on the staffing of Central Agency Daltechs. And provide that by next Wednesday's Hess meeting, so not in two days, but in a week and two days. I think that that is needed for the committee and the other delegates that represent the agency. I just see in my communities a real need for staffing improvements. And a real need for stronger support from the agency office and the central office to make those funds available at the local level. And it's not something that is the responsibility of the local staff. It's the responsibility of the agency and the central staff. And in that, I I know the first step is to have these uh. I apologize, forgot the the term you used, but sort of the Personnel Action Plan. For management to perform their duties appropriately, get back on the right step. And from there, you can evaluate your options. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Slater, and I guess. Let's do that for each of the um agencies. Ms. Benali, did I establish a motion and a second to receive this report? And I guess Ms. uh Ms. uh Jones. And and uh again. It's the committee, this particular committee that really brought the nineteen seventy nine tri-state agreement to the. To the table. We appreciate your initiative to then. And I know that New Mexico Daltechs is ready to sit at the table. And and committee members, we might have to reach out to Speaker and lobbyist Carlisle Begay. Get to the Arizona. Um, Department of Health or um the Arizona. Uh, what is it? Access to come to the table so that this agreement can be renegotiated with some um current prices. That would be um. One item.
Can I just make one thing clear, Chair, so?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Access A, they oversee behavioral health and. The Arizona Long Term Care System with Division of Social. A, it's Arizona Department of Economic Security. They oversee us and they're supposed to be our primary contact for the tri-state agreement. However, as I said, we work with New Mexico. Putting the United States Association for Communities. Have set up those working relationships. Everyone is willing to talk to talk about this, to talk this through. My ultimate goal is to make sure that we have one database, one client database system. Meaning everyone, every senior center from New Mexico, every senior center from Utah, report into what is called a DAR system with Arizona. And that way, we're more accurate with our numbers and then the at the agency levels, they can actually see in terms of. Who they've registered, how many meals are being served, are they serving breakfast? So there are a lot of measurements that I'm trying to put in place here. Um, and with this pandemic going on and the fact that I'm new, it's quite an adjustment for my program. Agency supervisor choose to get accustomed to. But I'd I'd be happy, more than happy to talk about this further if you all if you all would like. I'm more than willing to come back to um Hess and provide a PowerPoint if that's what you all would feel would be most beneficial. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, do you have the PowerPoint ready? If you do have it ready, we could put you on the agenda for Wednesday also.
Not right, not right now. Sorry, Chair. Um, if you could give me like a um this week to work on, I I could I can work on, I can present next week if you don't mind, if you all don't mind.
That was a test.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll uh as uh previously, uh Honorable Slater said. A report at the next uh Hess meeting that would be. Um. February sixteenth. So we'll put that down.
Okay.
Look, she. Oh, Edelis is talking. Mid uh Ms. Benali, uh Mr. Moos, did I establish a motion?
Yes, sir.
Oh, not yet, or we already did?
No, there's no motion or second.
Okay, committee members.
Chair, I'll most.
Uh, Honorable Paul Begay. I heard the Vice Chair Slater second. Then there's a third by Honorable Halona. Paul Begay makes the motion, Vice Chair Slater the second. Um, there's no other comments or questions. And again, uh, Ms. Jones, uh. We really appreciate uh the energy that you're putting into this work. And thank you for being real frank and honest that this particular um. Division of Aging and Long Term Care Services needs changes. And and how can we best. Accomplish it? And that's where this committee is willing to help you. Thank you. Mr. Moos.
Yes, sir. Hi, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior goes green. Honorable Frenell Halona. Honorable Frenell Halona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Paul Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Paul Russell Slater goes green. Honorable Shadien So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika goes green. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Should I, Chair, could I ask for a directive?
Uh, yes. Vice Chair Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. I was having difficulty unmuting my phone and I was trying to get to you before the the vote, but the request for the directive is to submit. That written report on the agency staffing levels and where we're at since the last report to Hess. By next week's Hess Committee Meeting, so we can review it before then. And then to include, I think it was the PowerPoint, not the other relevant materials related to the tri-state agreement. The other items that you discussed and brought up, Chair. Thank you.
Committee members. On on that, could we just, uh, Ms. Benali, in this directive, could we include it in the previous motion? Or do we have to have a new motion and a second? Give me some guidance.
Mr. Chair, preferably a sentence after the fact, after the 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 vote, um, a new motion and a vote would be proper.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. So, Honorable uh Vice Chair Slater, I recognize the vote to issue a directive. Do I hear a second from the committee? Second, Honorable. Look, she now, um, second by Honorable Frenell Halona. Committee members, any discussion on this directive? If not, Mr. Moos. Look, how vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Green.
Honorable Paul, Honorable Paul Begay Junior goes green. Honorable Frenell Halona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Frenell Halona goes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika goes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Vote of four in favor, one excused, and the chair not voting. Okay, Ms. Benali. We do have, what, item five D?
That's correct. Um, five um D is with uh by the Navajo Department of Justice regarding the opioid settlement. From um, I think it's Johnson and Johnson uh reaching a settlement with the Native American tribes. Representatives are Jason Steele, Attorney Paul Spruhan, Assistant Attorney General. Uh, with the litigation unit with the Navajo Department of Justice. And and Mr. Chair, an executive session link, Zoom link has been sent out. If if a an executive session is required, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali, and thank you for, just in case. Should a lawyer, uh, lawyers, attorneys. All for executive session that's ready, um. Mr. Paul Spruhan. You have the teleconference floor.
Yatay, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the committee, uh, as indicated, Paul Spruhan Yinshiya, Assistant Attorney General, Navajo Department of Justice. I have with me, who will be doing the primary presentation, Mr. Jason Searle, who is an attorney in our office, and Donald Simon. Who is one of our outside counsel on this particular matter, so I'd like to have Mr. Searle. Uh, introduce the topic and Mr. Simon uh for the committee. Thank you.
You may go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and Yatay, uh, share you Jason Yinshiya, Jason Searle Yinshiya. Um, uh, we wanted to give you an update because there have been developments in the opioid litigation. Um, we presented on this in the past. Um, as you know, uh, there's been an opioid epidemic that has uh been uh had an acute impact in Indian country and so. Um, the Navajo Nation along with hundreds of other tribes have sued a number of entities, distributors, marketers. Uh, retailers who were involved in one way or another in exacerbating uh this epidemic, so. Uh, the two primary um develop recent developments that we wanted to discuss today that I. I don't believe require going into executive session, uh, because the the terms or the the subject matter is public knowledge. Our first, uh, a a settlement with um, if you distributor, uh, a few distributors. I believe McKesson Cardinal and AmerisourceBergen, and then as it was also mentioned with Johnson and Johnson as well. Um, the amount that the nation would be receiving is estimated to be a a significant amount, and so we wanted to give an update about that. Um, where where that's going, where that is right now, and 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 what we can expect in the coming months. Uh, the other matter was the Purdue um uh bankruptcy. Um, as as I believe we may have presented to this committee before, there was a settlement reached there on. On the bankruptcy plan, however, that was appealed by a couple of states who who objected, and so that remains in limbo. Um, but anyway, with that uh brief overview, we have Don Simon and the Sinowski firm that we've been collaborating with on this case, and I'd like to invite him. Uh, with the chair's permission to uh present on the more specific terms of the recent settlement.
Um, thank you, Mr. Searle. Um, my name is Don Simon. I'm a partner at the Sinowski Chambers Firm in Washington, DC. Um, our firm has been honored to represent the Navajo Navajo Nation in the opioid litigation since two thousand seventeen. Um, with the filing of your lawsuit in this matter occurring in April of two thousand eighteen. We are co-counsel on this matter with uh two other firms, Gilbert LLP and and Fields LLP. Um, as Mr. Searle said, we have reached a tentative settlement, or two tentative settlements actually, for a major part of the opioid litigation. And I I would like to discuss the terms of those settlements with you and explain why we recommend that you accept um the settlements. Um, I in order to put it in context, I want to provide a little bit of of background about how we how we got here. The opioid litigation uh has been pending for for about four years. Thousands of cases have been filed uh by states, by cities, by counties, by Indian tribes, by. Um, private individuals, pension funds, hospitals, insurers. Um, all against the companies responsible for the opioid epidemic in this country. Broadly, these cases allege that the defendants in the pharmaceutical industry marketed dangerous. Dangerous opioid products by misrepresenting the risks of addiction. And this resulted in a nationwide opioid addiction crisis. It resulted in the addiction and deaths of hundreds of thousands of people. It ruined lives, it ruined families, and it burdened governmental healthcare, social service, and law enforcement systems. Uh, and the problem continues. Um, twenty twenty was the worst year on record for fatal opioid overdoses. American Indian communities have been particularly impacted. Um, Native Americans have the highest per capita rate of opioid overdoses. And the prescription opioid use among Native American youth is sixty percent higher than among white youth. Um, these cases have been filed against three categories of defendants. The first category are the companies that manufacture um these drugs. Um, those include familiar names like Purdue. Uh, Mallinckrodt, Johnson and Johnson, and other companies like Endo, Allergan, and Teva. The second group are companies that distributed these pills. Those are companies, the big companies are McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen. And finally, there are the retailers or the pharmacies such as Walgreens, Walmart, and and CBS. Most of these cases were filed in two thousand seventeen or in your as in your matter in two thousand eighteen. Um, and as I said, there are thousands of these cases all over the country. Um, they were all consolidated in one federal court in Cleveland. Um, most of the um cases are those filed by cities and counties. Um, but there are about a hundred and eighty separate tribal cases that have been brought on behalf of more than four hundred tribes. Um, because there are so many tribal cases, uh, in two thousand eighteen, the judge created. What we call a tribal track to sort of manage the tribal cases together. Um, he appointed a tribal leadership committee to um coordinate um all the tribal, all the litigation on behalf of the. Uh, tribes and um our firm as well as the other two firms that represent you, um, the Gilbert Firm and the Fields Firm. We all serve on this tribal leadership committee, so we have been very, very involved in the management of this litigation over the last few years. Um, the first thing the judge did was he selected two tribal cases to sort of uh allow the um defendants to to kind of test the law. To try to get those cases dismissed. Those were cases that were brought by the Muskogee Creek Nation and the Blackfeet Nation. So the defendants filed motions to dismiss um to um claim that the tribal cases. Um, should be dismissed as a matter of law, and in June two thousand nineteen, the judge rejected. Um, the defenses asserted by the defendants, and he denied the motions to dismiss. Uh, and then in the next step, in February two thousand twenty, the judge selected one case, a a case brought by the Cherokee Nation in Oklahoma. Um, to to actually go to trial, so he sent the case back from his court in Cleveland. Back to uh the federal court in Oklahoma to begin the trial work. At the same time. He designated a number of the cases by um cities and counties also to go to trial. And separately, there were cases brought by many of the states, by the attorneys generals in those states. Um, which were also um proceeding towards trial in state court, so there's been a lot of active litigation. All of which has, over time, brought pressure to settle on the defendants. And so over the last couple of years, there have been active settlement discussions. Uh, last summer, um, a major settlement was announced for the states and the counties. Um, who settled their claims with the distributor defendants, McKesson Cardinal, AmerisourceBergen, and with Johnson and Johnson. Now, that settlement did not include tribes, but the tribal leadership committee has been conducting very active, separate. Negotiations with those same defendants for for many months. And I'm pleased to report that last week, uh, we agreed on the terms of a settlement. Um, with this group of defendants. Um, so the terms of the settlement that would govern a settlement on behalf of all tribes. With um this group of three distributors, McKesson Cardinal and AmerisourceBergen, and also with um Johnson and Johnson. Um, this is a settlement that the tribal leadership committee recommends that all tribes accept. Um, and um. But it it's it's not binding on tribes. Um, it's every tribe's decision. Um, as to whether or not you want to participate in the settlement and accept the settlement. But speaking not just as a member of the tribal leadership committee, but also as um your counsel. Um, we do recommend that the Navajo Nation accept the settlement. Now, let me let me describe the terms of the settlement and uh how how it would work. So as I said, there are kind of two parallel settlements, and their terms are are largely aligned, but um there are some differences, so I'm going to. Talk about uh each one separately. The first one is with the three distributors. Now, the terms of that settlement are. Um, to pay a total of five hundred and fifteen million dollars to all tribes, so that's um slightly over half a billion dollars to all tribes. Over a period of six years. Now, of that amount, um, about seventy-five million is taken out. Um, and is is sort of in a separate settlement with the Cherokee Nation. Because of, as as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the Cherokee Nation was on a slightly different track. Um, because they have active litigation going in Oklahoma. Um, but once you take the Cherokee Nation's share out of the total, that leaves a balance of about four. that leaves a balance of about $430 million for all other tribes. That amount is to be paid in seven installments over a six and a half year period, each installment of $62.8 million. The settlement is open to all tribes, both those that filed lawsuits and also those that have not filed lawsuits. With the first payment coming within 30 days of what's called the effective date. Now, the effective date is when we've reached a certain threshold of participation by tribes. In other words, that a certain level of, a number of tribes have opted in and accepted the terms of the settlement. The threshold is that when there are 95% of the litigating tribes, those tribes that have filed lawsuits, sign participation agreements, and 14 of the largest, 17 of non-litigating tribes. So that's 14 non-litigating tribes that have populations of 5,000 members or more. When those two standards for participation in the settlement are met, then there will be the effective date. And then the companies will make the first payment of settlement proceeds. 15% of the settlement funds are to be set aside in a pool to pay attorney fees. The balance of 85% of the funds will be distributed to tribes. And I'll talk in a moment about the formula for that distribution. Those funds are restricted. They cannot be used by any, for any purpose other than for opioid treatment, abatement, and remediation. There's a wide variety of program services and activities that qualify for opioid remediation. But the funds are earmarked for opioid remediation broadly defined. So that's, those are the terms of the settlement with the distributors. There's a separate, parallel settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson. That settlement is for $150 million to be paid over two years. Again, the settlement is open to all tribes, both litigating and non-litigating. The first payment, again, will be within 30 days of the effective date. The effective date for this settlement is a, a little different. It's, it's, it's the same 95% participation for litigating tribes. But that's the only requirement. Unlike the settlement with the distributors, there's no required participation level for non-litigating tribes. Again, 15% of the funds are set aside for attorney fees. And again, the balance of the 85% of the settlement funds that will be distributed to tribes must be used for opioid abatement purposes. So when you put these two settlements together, it's a total of $665 million to be paid for, to be paid to Indian country for opioid remediation. It's about two thirds of a billion dollars. But that is, that money will be paid if we can reach the required participation levels and all tribes agree to participate in the settlement. All right, now let me turn to the question of what we call allocation. How is this $665 million going to be allocated to the 574 tribes across the nation? The, the process of allocation started in a related proceeding that Mr. Searle mentioned, the Purdue bankruptcy proceeding. In the Purdue bankruptcy, there was a settlement to provide tribes with $150 million in payments from the Purdue bankruptcy estate and from the Sackler family, who are the owners of Purdue. Now, as Mr. Searle mentioned, that settlement has subsequently been sort of set aside by a reviewing court and is, is sort of off on a tangent now or a side proceeding. And we're working to see if we can get the settlement reinstated. But before it was set aside by the reviewing court, the tribal leadership committee had developed an inter-tribal allocation formula to allocate the money among all tribes. And that formula is designed to send money to where it's most needed and where the harm from the opioid epidemic has been the greatest. Now, the formula takes account of a number of different metrics. Obviously, the population of a tribe is, is a central factor in the formula. But we also looked at the concentration of opioids that were sent to different tribal areas. We looked at opioid overdose rates. We looked at opioid death rates. We looked at poverty index. We looked at the cost of living indexed. And we worked with experts to develop a formula that fairly balanced all, all of these different considerations. That formula was broadly discussed among all the lawyers representing tribes in, in the litigation. And ultimately, it was adopted by the bankruptcy court for use in the Purdue bankruptcy. Now, that's going to be the starting point for the proposed allocation of the settlement funds with the distributor and Johnson &amp; Johnson settlements. In the distributor settlement, the nation's share of the allocation is 14.8%. That's, that's the largest share of any, any tribe in the country. So in the distributor settlement, the nation's share of the proceeds would be a little over $76 million. And then net of attorney fees, the, there would be about $65 million allocated to the nation for opioid abatement. In the Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement, the nation's share is, is a few points higher. It's 15.2%. So that, the nation's share on that settlement would total about $23 million with a net after attorney fees of about $19.6 million. So these two settlements would total between 99 and 100 million to the Navajo Nation with a net share of about $85 million. Now, again, the Johnson &amp; Johnson money will come over a two-year period. The money from the distributor settlement will be paid over a six-year period. As I said, this, the allocation formula for Purdue is the starting point for allocation with regard to these settlements. But the, the judge in Cleveland has, has set up a process where the allocation will be subject to modifications if, if necessary. The judge appointed two individuals, the special master who has been serving with the judge and helping the judge in this case, a man named David Cohen, and a former federal judge, Lane Phillips, who's a federal judge in Oklahoma, to, for, for the two of them to hear and decide any disputes that any tribe might want to raise relating to allocation. And what, what the judge has in mind is, for instance, if a tribe believes that its population number is incorrectly represented in the allocation formula, it would be able to go to Special Master Cohen and, and Judge Phillips and, and seek that kind of technical correction to the allocation. We don't expect the changes to the allocation formula to be significant, but we do think there may be some, some minor or technical changes made. Final point, and then I'd be pleased to address any questions you might have. So the, the court appointed Special Master Cohen to also serve as administrator for the trust accounts that will handle the settlement funds. And he also appointed three very highly qualified Native American individuals to help implement the settlement by providing outreach to tribes, to educate tribes about the settlement, explain the terms of the settlement, and to exercise general oversight regarding the settlement. Those are Kevin Washburn, who is the dean of the law school at the University of Iowa. And you may well know him as the former Assistant Secretary for Indian Affairs in the Obama Administration. Mary Smith, who is the former director of the Indian Health Service. And Kathy Hanon, who's a former partner at the accounting firm of KPMG and is the chair of the National Museum of the American Indian. These three individuals are very well-known in Indian country, have a tremendous set of expertise and background in Indian issues and are, are going to help the court and the attorneys implement the terms of the settlement and ensure the money gets to where it's supposed to go and is used to help deal with the terrible problem that opioids have caused on reservations throughout the country. So with that, I would be happy to, to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Committee members, have any questions?
Chair.
Honorable Carl Slater, vice chair, you have the floor.
Thank you. My request is to the Department of Justice to provide a summary to our colleagues who are not a member of the House committee. I know a lot of them have spoken or discussed this issue. And I think it'd be important to get them a very simple, clear document to explain the contents of this presentation. Chair, I have one more question.
Your billing history, pass four.
Go ahead. To the presenter. And to Mr. Spurlock.
Um, excuse me, Chair. I, I was, I was confused if, if there was a question. I think delegates later, yes, we can provide a summary right after this session.
Thank you. Vice Chair Slater, do you have follow-up? Do we have Ms. Bob Roth still on the call?
Yes, sure. So this is Ms. Bob Roth, chief legislative counsel. I have one question, if you would allow me and then.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's exactly the reason I'm calling on you.
Okay, I, and probably have a different, more detailed questions that I will address when drafting legislation to accept the settlements, establish funds and such. But one of the questions, I mean, I wasn't sure if I was following the presenter correctly, but the presenter was talking about this federal group that included Mr. Washburn and two other people. And I, their names went in and out. But anyway, that group, and he was talking about the fact that they, their, their charge would be to ensure that the tribe spends the money appropriately. So really, my, my question, is, is the dollars, will the dollars be coming to the nation? Or are they going into some trust fund somewhere that the feds will distribute to the nation?
Well, the.
So that's my question.
Mr. Chairman, may I, this is Don Simon. May I respond?
Thank you for clarifying your name, Mr. Simon. Yes, you may.
So the, the money will pass through a trust fund approved by the court in order to be distributed directly to the nation and to all other participating, all other tribes participating in the settlement. But the funds will come to the nation for the nation through its health department, through its law enforcement department, through its social service agency. However, the nation wants to allocate the funds for purposes of opioid remediation. The, the spending will be done by the nation.
Thank you. One follow-up.
Go ahead, Ms. Bob Roth.
One follow-up question. Is this group going to have to, will the nation have to go back and get approval from this group? I'm trying to understand why this group was, was formed.
Well, I, I, again, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to respond to that. The, the, the court appointed these three individuals, Dean Washburn, Director Smith, and, and Ms. Hanon, really for two purposes. First, to interact with tribes throughout the country, to provide education about the settlement, to answer questions about the settlement, and, and just be a sort of repository of information for tribes, a resource for tribes. But also because there will be some reporting, some minimal, what we believe will be minimal reporting required as to how tribes are spending the money to, to ensure the court that the money is being spent for the purposes intended and, and for the purposes provided for in the settlement. So that reporting system has not yet been set up. We expect there will be, that it will be, as I said, relatively minimal, but there will be some obligation for tribes receiving the money to report back to these administrators as to how, in general, the money has been spent for abatement purposes. And then these three administrators, in turn, will be able to report to the court about that spending.
Thank you. And just one last follow-up question. Does this, with the settlements with the states, do they also have some federal overseers as to how they spend the funds?
Well, it, it's, it's not so much the federal overseers as they have to assure the court that the settlement is being and their settlement, like, so, has the exact same restriction on the use of the funds for, only for abatement purposes. If, if anything, the tribes have more latitude because one thing we were able to negotiate, I mean, there's a, a broad list. I think it's a 22-page document that lists abatement programs. Abatement programs, services, um, activities that qualify. As appropriate abatement spending within the terms of the settlement. Um, that same list applies to all the states, all thirty thousand local governments. And to all the tribes, but in addition, we were able to negotiate a kind of addendum to that saying. Uh, tribes have the right to spend money for culturally appropriate activities. Traditional healing activities, um, activities that within the judgment of the tribe. Um, are appropriate for um treatment and abatement purposes. Within the um culture, history and traditions um of a tribe to be basically exercised at the discretion. Of tribal leaders. So um, that's a considerable broadening of the rights of tribes as to how this money can be spent. As compared to um what states and cities and local governments uh are bound by.
Okay, thank, and thank you for the response and um, as I said. I, I'm sure I will have very detailed questions uh that I can address with the Department of Justice. Uh, in the future and with that, Chair, I don't have uh any other questions right at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, your questions and the answers. I'm what uh. Brought a little, a little. Less murkiness to the presentation. Um. Mr. Spuron. Are you gonna go and present to the BNF as well as another key committee? And perhaps the. Attorney General will. Addle a litigation update?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Paul Spuron. Thank you. Uh, we fully intend to go to the appropriate committees, be it BNF and NABI KAT. Yeah, um, similar to this, I think we can also provide further material, PowerPoint and such things and um. I do believe that's how we intend to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spuron. Uh, committee members. The chair is open for a motion to accept the. Updates. I hear that's a motion by Honorable Paul Begay. Do I have a second?
Second Delegate Slater.
Hey, you're back online. Vice Chair Slater's second. Any follow-up questions or discussion? All right then. Mr. Mo's a roll called vote and thank you to the presenters. I didn't, again, I didn't catch the other individual's name, but I caught Mr. Simon's name.
Vice Chair, Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Zalona. Honorable Pernell Zalona. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Wunika.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Wunika votes green. Honorable Pernell Zalona.
Zalona votes green.
Chair, you have voted for in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mo's. Let the record show vote of four in favor, zero opposed. One member excused and the chair not voting. Okay. The. Trying to find the agenda again. Okay, that brings us to old business, there being none. Seven new business, there being none. And then eight, close of meeting. Announcements, committee members.
Chair.
Oh, let's go ahead.
I had sent an email previously requesting for um Mister Zane James to provide a presentation. Um, before the committee, either this Wednesday or the Wednesday after. I don't know if it got lost in the whole DIT thing. I, I just haven't received a response back yet and. I want your guidance on whether we should schedule him for Wednesday or next Wednesday.
What was the report respective of?
The organization that he works for and I can't remember what it's called, the, the healthcare company. And what they provide to our Navajo, New Mexico citizens and the work that they're doing.
Oh, uh. Western Sky.
Yes, yes, Western Sky.
Okay, uh, Ms. Benali, let's put him on the agenda for Wednesday.
Okay, alright.
He's a staff assistant to the OPVP.
Okay.
I, I don't think he is an OPVP staff assistant. I think he's just works for this company. I know in the past, I know in the past he has been.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Chair, so. Uh, so if um, uh, Vice Chair Slater could forward me the contact information to uh Mister James, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So we do have a, a draft uh. Um, agenda for Wednesday and this will be a new item. The other is, as I stated before, um. Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council is having a work session. At Coyote Canyon Chapter. Perspective of three legislations that are sponsored. Two are sponsored by Kial and Begay and one is sponsored by Eugenia Charles Newton. Zero two two, zero two three. And I think zero two four, that, all of them dash twenty-two. Related to. The, the program. As well as the director's contract, as well as. Who will have oversight over the we, uh, veterans program. So it would be um. And the only one that were included in that invite was. The chair and the vice chair of the committee. Uh, but I'm extending that to, nice, I forwarded that email to all the Hess members.
Mr. Chair.
How we'll go. Yeah?
This is Angelita Benelli. Uh, the zero, zero two two and zero zero two three are, I have them on the agenda for Wednesday.
Okay. So it'd be good for us to be on that call tomorrow. And the regular meeting on Wednesday, Thursday, um, on per. Title two, um, that's a regular scheduled NABI committee meeting. And then Friday, for the committee's information, Representative Tom O'Halloran. Will be in Salem at the NABI College. Meet with uh. The administration and then he will have a question and answer period with the students. And I'm extending an invitation to the committee to attend. As I will be there in person. As part of the NABI College Board of Regents. Committee members, if you wish to. To attend, then we, we can facilitate that. Just let me know if you will.
Chair, my uh service cut out. Could, could you say what that meeting was in Salem again?
Uh, it's a meeting with the. Representative Tom O'Halloran. Both uh, um, pushing for facilities and program. And it'll be a meeting with uh members of the administration and certain members of the Board of Regents as well as. Uh, the students and the faculty.
And what date was that?
Uh, February eleventh. That'd be this Friday.
Chair, what time is that? Good meeting gonna start on Friday? I'm sorry.
I don't, oh. I'll have to resend it out. Think it's at nine, but I'll have to reclarify. And committee members, uh, the NABI um. Um, meeting, we should have that then a college, uh. Hopefully the then a college charter amendment's ready for NABI. Thank you. Um, with that. Chair is open for the motion to adjourn.
Motion, Governor Paul Begay.
Oh, such a, recognize that motion. Wait here a second. We have a second for.
Second.
Second by Honorable Slater. Uh, Mr. Mo's roll called vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Governor Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Zalona. Honorable Pernell Zalona.
Halala votes green.
Honorable Pernell Zalona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Wunika.
Greens.
Edison J. Wunika votes green. Green. Chair, vote of four in favor, zero opposed, adjourned at one fourteen PM.
Thank you, committee members. Thank you for taking the time to. Get this uh special meeting um. Out of the way and. Hopefully we listen to each other tomorrow as well as Wednesday. Um, next regular meeting is. Wednesday. February ninth. Thank you. We are adjourned. Careful, drive safe. Care of yourselves. Thank you. Go on now.
And are you still there?
Yeah, I'm waiting to end the meeting here.
Okay, yeah, this is Mitt. I'm sorry, um. Uh, ready to have my notes and I just wanted to make sure we have a, a correct um verbiage for the directive. For uh Valerie Jones's um report. Can you email that to us so we can uh um identify the report? Uh, title correctly?
Okay, I'm gonna have um, um, Leonard Mo's um. Transcribe that and then we'll, we'll get it over to you.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
See you later. Have a good day.
You too. Bye-bye.